I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of February 1st. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a few moments of silence for Chris Hernandez, Sean McElhavy, and Pete Bedwright. You may be seated. And, and I would just like to say, our invocations, Dave, aren't usually religious in nature, but I would like to say, we started off with a hell of a year. January, January has just been outrageous for so many people in town, but there's always a little bit of good news. And for Denise, it's very good news. For some of us, it's, we're saddened, but we are excited that we have a new city manager, and I'm sure Denise wants to introduce him in further detail. But as we all, you know, sometimes change is really hard. We've had Denise for quite a long time, but I know we welcome Dave and his insight, and I know everybody's going to be extremely helpful in helping him forge his way and learn about the city of Avalon and the, the reason we're so special. So, I personally would like to welcome you.
Thank you, Mayor.
If we may please have the roll call.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
For the record, we have our city attorney with us also, Scott Campbell, and it is with great pleasure that I do introduce Dave Maestros. I know that during city manager comments, he'll be giving you a little bit of history.
Excellent.
This is day two on the job.
So, do I look today for announcements and written communications?
Uh, neither both of us.
Okay.
Denise, do we have any written?
I do, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for that. I just wanted to remind the citizens of Avalon that on November 3rd of 2020, they voted in the Measure H, which is for the hospitals or warfage on our cross-channel vessels and in moorings. There is a 50 cent increase that will happen on April 1st, as well as a dollar for every night for vessels that are on our moorings in the harbor. The election for June 7th of 2022, we will have the seat of the mayor, as well as two city council members, and you can start pulling your papers February 4th all the way through March 11th. Vehicle season does start next Tuesday, or excuse me, Monday, February 7th, and it goes through March 31st. And vehicle hours are Monday through Thursday, 8 to 12, and 1 to 4. Normally in our municipal code, it says starting on April 1st, but there was some hitches with our stickers and stuff, so we're just starting fresh next Monday.
Great, okay. And were you, there was another item that I saw on my phone that said you were going to mention a written communication?
Oh, I'm sorry, Annie, I was on announcements. Thank you for reminding me. We did receive one written communication regarding the 2020 presidential election and results in process. The city council received it both electronically and a hard copy in their mailboxes.
Okay. And I do believe on that, on that, on that comment and on that person that you explained the county's responsibility for the election and all of that, correct?
He was provided the contact information for a phone number as well as an email to reach out. Since it is not a city-run election anymore, it's by the county, and we don't have access to the questions that they, that we were being asked.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay. Did you have anything, Dave?
Um, we do have, I, I don't have any announcement or written communication. We do have one presentation tonight, though, Mayor.
Okay.
We want to proceed to that. We have, by Zoom, I believe, we have Catalina Express President and CEO Greg Monbar, who's here to provide an update on the impact of the newly proposed California Air Resources Board Commercial Harbor Craft Regulations as it relates to Catalina Express operations.
And there's Greg. Are you talking?
Evening, Mayor.
Oh, there you are.
Council.
Good.
Am I up?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wanted to just take a few minutes to update you on the latest California Air Resources Board regulations that are taking on the commercial harbor craft group. So, we, that would include, uh, within that group, ferries, tug, sport fishing vessels that carry passengers, pilot boats, whale watch, excursion, et cetera. There's a lot of people, dinner crews, any of these types of vessels, um, will play in on this latest round of, of commercial harbor craft regulations. Now, we're not new to the emissions program. Catalina Express has, over the years, over at least 20-plus years, been upgrading engines on all of our vessels as new emissions were available to move up to. We've had help from Carl Moyer, we've had help with the, from the Port of LA, we've had help from the Port of Long Beach in assisting with these, uh, programs along the way. So, it's not new to us that CARB, or the California Resources Board, would come out with new regulations. It's just that this one caught everybody off guard. It's, uh, much more impactful, and I want to explain why. Once we heard, well, this, this comes along with the fact that, over the years, we've moved along from tier zero to tier one to tier two, and now tier three, and the new regulation would come in play would be tier four. Now, the only reason this is a impact to all of us that's beyond what we've seen in the past is the fact that tier four can no longer be adjusted through the engine manufacturers anymore. It takes after treatment, which is a very cumbersome and heavy issue as far as what we have to add to the vessel and weight and structure. We immediately went to our design group, InteC Crowther, who has designed three of our four catamarans, and said, okay, we've now, uh, are looking at California wanting to adopt tier four to existing vessels that we operate. This has never happened anywhere in the world. This is not happening anywhere in the United States other than California. So, it's catching everyone off guard, and especially when you back into the fact that they want this to fit into existing vessels. So, the study we, we, we were involved with also included a group up in the bay, Golden Gate ferry operators that run across San Francisco Bay, also, uh, WIDA, the Water Emergency Transit Authority up there. This study came out, and at the end of the study is where the issue really comes in. In order to upgrade an existing vessel like Jetcat, which I'm sure all of you have ridden on, or, or any of our larger catamarans, it came out that we would be adding somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 tons to this vessel. All of these vessels are built around a, a limitation to their weight. Their structural integrity, like an airline, has a weight limit. And when we came out of this and understood what it would cost, approximately $7 million to do this upgrade, we went, okay, that's interesting. Uh, now, what's the worst part? The worst part is this. An existing vessel like Jetcat, which operates a certified number of 390 passengers, would now have to take 15 tons off this vessel in some fashion. Well, the only thing you can remove from the vessel is passengers. So, this vessel went from 390 passengers down to 172. I think you can see the impact. That's not feasible, it's not economically feasible, and it doesn't make any sense at all because now we'd have to do two-round trips to move the same amount of people that we do in one trip. The carbon footprint per passenger would be 100% worse. Now, there's a feasibility portion to this new regulation. If it's not feasible to upgrade the existing vessel, then you need to go forward and build a new one. Well, okay, so we did this study that took us beyond that, and that study included designing of a new vessel that was like the vessels that we operate today, meaning passenger capacity of roughly 400, 450. And when we got the results of that, to build that around tier four, which can be done, it's, uh, not that big of an issue, but it's a $20 million price tag. So, you can see where we're going here. This correlates, this whole study, to the whole fleet that Catalina Express operates. We've told them, we do 30 trips a day. We can't afford to think that we are going to go out and do 60 trips a day, so we would have to renew the fleet. The problem with that is, when, when they came along with this, this old regulation, they didn't put any dollars to it. There's no grants, there's no help. Now, Carl Moyer is one of the funding sources that's always been there, if we can do this pre, when it's supposed to happen. Catalina Express, as you know, operates eight vessels. We have one of them that comes due in 2024 under this regulation, five more that are, that are in 2025, and two more that are in 2026. So, to meet the goals of this, and there are some portions of this regulation that talks about extensions along the way, and how if we're moving forward and there's not enough shipyards and other processes, there's two-year extensions, and for ferry operators, there's enough that we could go out possibly eight years. But you've got to show them that, one, it's not feasible, and, two, that you're already trying to meet some of the goals with some of the other vessels that are due. So, the hard part here is, we know, and the board of the California Air Resources Board knows, that somehow we need to get the people to understand that we need funding. We need partial funding, we need some help with this. If we have to build a new fleet for Catalina Express, we're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of $120 million. If we're going to continue to help feed the economy that drives Catalina with tourism, as well as making sure that all of our, uh, all of our people that live on that island, all of our friends, all of our customers that live on that island, can get back and forth, um, at a reasonable cost. And that's not going to be possible if we have to go out and spend somewhere in the neighborhood over the next eight years, $120 million. Nor do I believe that there's an institution that's going to fund Catalina Express to the tune of $120 million. So, what we've asked people to do is try to understand this. We've put a website together to help people understand it. We need to keep it reasonable for public transportation. I believe CARB understands that. I believe the board of CARB understands that. We've had many meetings with CARB and their staff, and I believe they understand that we're not like vessel operators or the high-speed ferries that operate in San Francisco, which are publicly funded and built. So, we need help from everybody who's willing to take a look and have them sign a petition, help us with this petition. There's a website called protectcatalinaisland.com. If people would just go to that website, take a look, read up on all the things that we've been talking about here, and try to understand it, you'll see that we need the petition to go in so that the board really does build the backing from the people, that we need help with this, and that the only way we'll get that is by voices being heard, and people sending in, you know, their thoughts as well as support for some type of funding from the governor. And the governor is hearing this, and we just need to make it stronger. Believe me, the other people that are doing the same things we're trying to do is the tugboat fleet, AWO, American Workboat Organization. They've got a big campaign going on, and so does the sport fishing fleet. I mean, for them to force most of the sport fishing people out of business, they don't make a lot of money, but they sure do make a lot of people happy to go out and go whale watching or fishing. So, this whole program of regulations really needs some help from the government. We need to keep people in business, and we need to, the affordability that it takes to keep Catalina alive and allow the families to get, to come and go, as well as the people who have second homes, as well as the people who live there. So, that's really what I wanted to bring out. I wanted you to understand why this has become a bigger deal. It's not the norm. We've been able to deal with the upgrades along the way, but this one is just too big. We need help with it. And I'm certainly available to answer any questions, if there are questions about anything I've said or how I can help. And I do want to thank, uh, uh, both the mayor, she helped us with an op-ed piece, what really helped people understand what's, what this is all about. Also want to have, thank Cindy Magugu of Cassidy. She's attended the workshops, spoke, and testified during those, as well as Lisa Lavelle, who did a very good job of the same thing, helped us at these workshops. And then Jim Lucian, who has been in this all the way along and spoke also in favor of what Catalina needs, helping people understand what Catalina is all about, and that its only real economy is tourism. Let's not kill it. Let's make sure that there's going to be a way for people to get back and forth and do the things they do today, even if that means we need to build a new fleet. We're here to do that. We just need to be able to afford it.
Right.
So, with that, um, that's really what I have to say, and certainly available to answer any questions.
Well, I will say you did outline that very simply and, and specifically, so I really appreciate that. I think everybody understands the, the situation that, that you're in, and of course, the community of Avalon is. Are there any questions, either from the screen or from any of the other council members or anybody in the audience?
I do have, I don't have a question, I have an e-comment.
Okay.
As a community member and president, CEO of Catalina, of Love Catalina Tourism Authority, Chamber and Visitors Bureau, I have been closely monitoring participating in the CARB hearings and the impacts on harbor crafts, including sport fishing vessels and passenger ferries. The proposed regulations, while endeavoring to achieve reduced carbon emissions, are simply cost prohibitive and not supported by current technological advancements. The cost of retrofitting or building new vessels to meet the proposed standards is over $2 million for small vessels and over $20 million for boats like those operated by Catalina Express or the Catalina Flyer. In addition, the passenger ferries servicing Catalina Island have been and/or are under current mandates, undergoing tier-three upgrades that cost millions of dollars. The vessels cannot feasibly be further retrofitted to meet the proposed tier-four standards. I encourage all community members to sign the petition and participate in the upcoming hearings in order to maintain our lifeline to the mainland and many small business owners' livelihoods. A greener future for transportation and sports vessels is what we all want, but it must be sought within the confines of reasonable financial limits.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. Council, any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say.
Uh, you like, go ahead, Lisa.
No, go ahead, you're good, go ahead.
I just wanted to add also that, um, while Greg illustrated that very well, this also affects every single sport fisher company, whale watching tours, um, all, all of that. So, this, you know, is a pretty big impact for our community, uh, that we all really do need to keep on top of. So, thank you, Greg, for being here to, to help answer a lot of questions that you could do much better than us trying to explain all the circumstances to members of the community.
We were encouraged, I think, Greg, to hear during the last meeting that there was potentially some funds we didn't think were going to be available originally, but I don't know if, um, we need to do any additional letter writing as a council. I know that we've already sent one letter in. If anything further on top of that in terms of trying to go after some of those public funds to be able to assist, since it provides a public service, is something that we need to look at and move forward with. But thank you for coming tonight and explaining this to the community. I think the biggest thing is knowing how much your family loves both the island and the ocean, and wanting to help protect it, and wanting to be in compliance and having been in compliance, and just finding this, um, move is both equally kind of ahead of the technology and also well outside of the scope of what any given business can do. And hearing some of the stories from some of the boat owners of having to lose their business because retrofits can't happen on certain types of boats was just heartbreaking to hear, and it was, the first meeting we did was about eight hours long in hearing that testimony. So, um, just, uh, thank you for continuing and letting the community know about this. And yeah, please do go to that website and sign the petition.
And Lisa, I think we were all encouraged when we heard that at the last workshop. You're right, and I should have added that in with, when the person who was there with CARB was the head of Carl Moyer, that funding source, when they actually said, if you have something that's not feasible, we can take a look at it and we can support that, but what we need is funding source to come down to Carl Moyer from the governor that would allow them to take on some of what we've been all talking about here tonight. So, you're right. I mean, that was a, a big breakthrough for a lot of us to hear them say, well, wait a minute, Carl Moyer, yes, we can get involved, but we need a funding source that, uh, you know, comes down from the, the government that will help us achieve what you're talking about here, but they can get involved. And that, that was a breakthrough because prior to that, it's always been said by the staff, no, you just need to pass this cost along to your public, to the people that ride. Well, that doesn't make sense.
Right.
This is so good for California, which it is. We all need to continue down the road of lower emissions. Then we need to be able to do it, and we need the government to help us finance that. And we're all for it, but let's keep it achievable.
Is it, can it be assisted on the federal level too, since we're in federal waters? Or is it only going to be from the?
Unfortunately, they've kind of regulated that out in that, uh, we are in California, and California's jurisdiction goes out some 12 miles, so we're never really in federal waters, even though the state can only claim free or cities can only claim free. Um, we've been through that. I think that's actually, if you go back in time, that's what chased out all the gambling ships that used to be mid-channel in the old days.
But if you can't take your cannabis across the water because it's federal, um, they're getting away with that, you know?
No, I agree. It's, we'd love to see this federal government step up, but like I said, California at this point is the only state adopting this policy to retro, back, back to upgrading existing vessels. We've all known since 2019 that if you lay up a new keel, if you're building a new vessel, you had to build it around tier four. And again, that's achievable. We can do that. But you just can't take that technology and put it into something that's already built.
Right.
That's the, that's the hard part. So, we lose the whole fleet.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Greg. If there's no further questions, um, we'll continue the meeting.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Department head reports. There comes Bob Greenlaw.
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works.
It's his birthday tonight, too.
Oh, yeah.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Staff all day has been, uh, brought me donuts, decorated my office. The whole day is everybody's happy birthday. It made me feel really welcome, so.
I see.
Yes, and loved.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I got three items for you tonight. The Active Transportation Plan. The revised draft Active Transportation Plan is available for public review. To view the plan online, go to the city's homepage at cityofavalon.com. Scroll down to the bottom of the page under Capital Improvement Projects heading, and select the link Avalon Active Transportation Project. Scroll down to, um, the ATP Final Plan on that page, and we're, staff is working towards facilitating a special city council meeting here in, uh, February, later in February or early March, uh, to review the revised plan that we've previously reviewed with you, and to seek direction from council. If the current plan is sufficient, you find it sufficient, then staff will recommend its adoption at that meeting. If it's not, then we can make some revisions. Cabrillo-Mold Terminal Reconstruction Phase Two. The Cabrillo-Mold, um, team is making, uh, good progress on the concept plan and alternatives for the second phase here. As I presented previously, the team is working on the design intent that will be the basis for a design-build-construction contract. In the near future, staff is working to facilitate a community workshop to review and receive input on that plan from the community. We've been previously working with a stakeholder, so we're ramping up for that meeting and to be able to share that with the, with the entire community. And then, uh, the Pebbley Beach Road Revetment Project, where we have all the holes within all the rock revetment up against the ocean. Staff received notice that the final permit necessary for construction is scheduled at the next California Coastal Commission meeting here Wednesday, February 9th. The public may, uh, view the permit application, submit comments on the Cal, California Coastal Commission website at coastal.california.gov, and under the Coastal Permit Application section on that. Is there any questions you have for me tonight?
Is there any reason for the city to participate, or just the fact that we put in the permit just says what we want and we don't have to do anything else?
We don't have to do anything. I think that, uh, uh, that we've put a lot of work into it, the applications, um, very tight, has all the information that anybody seeking, um, any, any of that information make comments, um, it's available to them, and, uh, I don't figure that there'd be any adverse comments on it because basically what, we're repairing what is there, we're not going out further into the ocean. We're just, uh, repairing what has been damaged by storms.
Yeah, excellent, great, that's good news.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and happy birthday.
Yeah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Warren Karstaf and Harbormaster. Just a couple of updates on the maintenance of our city floats. Innovative engineering has completed the second flotation drum for our city end float. The drum has been delivered on schedule to Larson Bowshaw. The drum has been delivered on schedule to Larson Boat Shop where it will eventually be installed on our city end float there. The drum is the second in a series of four drums that require replacement due to their age and their life cycle. The plan has been to complete and replace one drum each year until all the drums have been replaced. Mole Float 2 is also at Larson Boat Shop and is getting much-needed maintenance. I'll provide you with a more detailed report next council meeting because at this time, the float is still being sandblasted and readied for a good look over to see what kind of steel fabrication and painting's going to have to be done. Also out of the water, we removed today the Pier H float, is one of the docks that is used by the excursion vessels alongside the pier, and that one comes out for annual maintenance and should be in by the end of the week. Since my last report, we had at least one significant gale that occurred during the early morning hours of Saturday, January 22nd, and carried on until the early afternoon the same day. Preparations that were made by patrol ahead of the storm made a big difference. Staffing was adequate for the storm and there was nothing significant to report. And now for the numbers, patrol have moored 181 vessels for a total of 1,789 nights. Patrol responded to one minor medical, warned and advised seven individuals of municipal code violations, did 26 public assist, which is like a lot of towing, broken down vessels, things like that, and then did 101 security patrols of the facilities. Tonight, we have a threat of northeast winds possible again after midnight, so patrol removed the majority of the floats and docks off the pier and have advised the boaters of the forecast. Grave shift will step up patrols and keep watch and advise me and let me know if there's any additional things that need to be done before our cruise ship arrival tomorrow, so it's kind of waning in the wind there. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions? I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Audra McDonald, Administrative Analyst, and I have happy news to report, and it is kind of apropos that I'm following Mr. Bombard where he talks about how important it is for Catalina Express and the residents. I'm happy to report that approximately 2,400 residents took advantage of the extra $100 commuter subsidy offered for the month of January 2022. The extra funds were part of the first round of federal COVID relief transit money that was earmarked for Los Angeles County. The city's continued engagement with LA County Metro assisted in these extra funds being allocated to the city. The city would like to thank Metro staff, specifically Chelsea Meister, Catalina Express, specifically Judy Rios and the Avalon crew, Finance Director and Chief Number Cruncher Matt Baker, who was really worried what these numbers were going to come in at, and a special shout-out to Alex Campos, who manned the front counter and fielded all the calls. We hope the savings residents received last month will help a little on the way to the recovery from the pandemic. Also, as a reminder, the city has increased its regular subsidy from 70 to 85 per ticket book through the end of June to offset the recent fare increases and keep costs to residents of 195 a book. That will be changing, obviously, due to the upcoming orphanage fee. City staff will continue to work closely with our partners at Metro and the Express to identify any additional opportunities to support our residents through the commuter subsidy program. Thank you very much.
Any questions of Audra? That is good. 2,400, that's a good number.
It's, it's a perfect number. It was a very happy number for Matt. I told him I wasn't going to leave it on a voicemail, I had to tell him in person after I got off the phone with Judy, so, yeah. And just wanted to shout out again to everyone who worked hard to make that happen.
Nice, Audra, thank you.
Good evening, Counsel, City Staff, Michael Oliveria, Fire Chief. We got out our Assistance to Firefighter Grant for the ladder truck a couple weeks ago. That was submitted. We've also went through the first round to update our local Hazard Mitigation Plan that will be funded 75% hopefully by grant, 25 for us. We're working on that. The month of January, we had 80 calls of service, 43 medical, 37 fire calls, on top of building maintenance hydrants and some more inspections. I attended the LA County Firefighter Flagler's Funeral. That's about as close as it gets for us. That's our neighbor battalion, they call it 14. They're the ones that come when there's brush fires. One of our local relief captains that comes over, it was her fire station, so it was a, considering the time, it was a great event they put on very well, a very good send-off for them. I'd also like to thank our peer support, LA County Fire Peer Support. Calls over here, or calls for firefighters are hard. Over here, calls for firefighters are extremely hard at times, especially when we go on calls where we know the person. It just affects you differently because we, it's tougher since we know them. So, LA County Fire Peer Support between the cities, the things the city has, the things that LA County Fire offers, it was a great, we have, members are given stuff to reach out confidentially, however they need to, to help get through it. So I want to thank county for that. That's it.
Questions, comments? Great, thank you.
Primetimers, on Thursday, February 10th, we will be having our very first Primetimers Luncheon at Seane Waters from 11:00 to 1:00. We will be serving a lunch from Buffalo Nichols, a chef salad or a chicken fried steak, your choice, plus the Valentine season, we'll be crafting bouquets of roses out of strawberries and dipping them in chocolate. It'll be a lot of fun. If you're over 55, come join us, come join us. The cost for the first Primetimer Luncheon for the New Year is just $3. Contact Marissa or I at City Hall. I want to invite everyone to go fly a kite this weekend at Kite Festival up at Joe Machado Field from 11:00 to 2:00. Bring your favorite kite or purchase one from us on the day of the, on the day of the event for as little as $10. There'll be prizes for the highest flown, longest flown, and the best homemade kite. You can buy a barbecue hot dog or hamburger with chips and drink for only $5. Come join us this Sunday, 11:00 AM, at Joe Machado Field. In the Community Service Department, we have already started the process of utilizing our volunteer policy, registering our volunteers to make sure their rights are met and we are safe. Thanks to the LifeScan professionals at Avalon Pack and Ship, we're able to fingerprint our volunteers here on the island. If there's a community member who is looking for volunteer opportunities, whether it be coaching, beautifying our public spaces, helping with senior mills, community events, or working our commuting garden, please contact Marissa or I at City Hall. We will, we will be happy to help you with the process and put you to good use. Verge Snack Bar is going back out to RFP. We received zero RFPs back by the deadline of January 28th. We are now extending that deadline to February 17th due to the fact that we've had more interest and two that are just late in turning it in. We are hoping with the new deadline, February 17th, it will spark those interested into Special events, our local festivals, Fall Festival, Spring Festival, Cinco de Mayo are all out of compliance with the LA County Public Health due to the food vending that we have there. So currently, we are working with the Health Department and working, working out the compliance with our food vendors. As we work, as we work through these, I will keep you guys apprised into what the updates will be. I will have more for you at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Dave, I have a couple of questions. Do you know how much it costs for those, for volunteers to get their fingerprints done?
We're picking up, we're picking up that cost.
Oh.
And I believe it's around $80.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, with, with all this, with the Health Department, how's that going to impact our curmeses?
How's that going to affect our what?
The curmeses and the fundraisers that, that individuals have in the park.
It will dramatically affect all of it.
Okay, that's terrible news.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've been flagged, so.
Yeah, I am so sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sergeant Grayson Klein, representing Captain Joe Badali. Joe is in New York for Officer Mora's funeral tomorrow. He's representing the LA County Sheriff's Department as well as Avalon Station at the funeral. Nothing really to report other than there was zero arrests this week, which was really nice to see. I worked all weekend up until 2:00 in the morning, and looking at the interaction with the deputies as well as the sergeants at the local bars and the local businesses has been amazing because seeing our faces seemed to be keeping crime down in behavior really well. They come out and engage us, and it's been really nice to see, so.
Yeah.
That's about all I have to report. They're starting to recognize our faces and names now, and it's, it's made a real nice community here for us.
Yeah, community policing is what we keep talking about, right? So, when you're out there, you're definitely policing but keeping, keeping the peace as well, so.
Yes, ma'am, that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Oh, and here comes our Finance Director.
Matt Baker, Finance Department. I only have an announcement, that next meeting, we'll be doing the mid-year budget update. Other than that, you know, it's business as usual in finance. We're working on the mid-year budget, and we're going to start shifting focus to the 2023 fiscal year budget, so, unless there's questions for me, that's all I have.
Thank you for good counseling, yeah. Thank you, Matt. Would you like to get some water, Denise? Okay. All right, City Manager Report.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As, as you know, and you mentioned earlier, it's my second day on the job, so I don't have a tremendous amount of detail to report on.
Wait, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Will they be able to see him better if he's standing at the microphone? No, okay.
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, I, but I would like to say that over these, first of all, I'm extremely excited to be here. I appreciate this opportunity. I've been looking forward to it ever since October, so I'm happy to be here. I've had a crash course over the last two days in city operations. I think I have met, sat down with all our department heads so far, many of the staff. I have met the majority, sat down with the mayor and majority of counsel, and by the end of this week, I'll have everybody covered on one-on-one meetings, trying to get up to speed on what's going on. I would like to say, however, I think Counsel or Counsel and the Mayor should be very proud of the staff and everybody you have here. They have been over-the-top welcoming and helpful to me. As you indicated, Mayor, at the beginning, change can be a little scary, a little nerve-wracking for some folks, and I understand that, and, but they have been very, very helpful, and I appreciate that and look forward to that same relationship going forward. And if, if Counsel or any of you have any questions for me at this time, I'd be more than happy to ask, answer.
Any questions, Counsel? Scott, you got a, you got a question? Your name just showed up, I was wondering. Okay, well, I guess you're off the hook for now.
Thank you.
Okay. City Attorney, you have anything to report?
Yeah, two things. First, our office in DC provided a link to a seminar that the federal government is having for grant opportunities. These are all competitive grants. This is this week, and I know Audra will be attending that, so hopefully there'll be some funds available. And on behalf of the City Attorney's Office, we want to welcome David to California, and interestingly enough, he has brought some Ohioans with him. The Cincinnati Bengals will be engaged with the Rams in two weeks from now, and we hope that his allegiance is to his newfound state rather than Ohio.
Well, and I have a question for Scott and Audra. Are any of those grant funds to help to pay for attorney fees?
If it's a project, they are actually, they do include overhead and administrative costs for projects that qualify under the grant, so yes.
Okay. All righty, and Counsel Member reports?
I'll, I'll.
Or did you have anything you wanted to report? Okay.
I'll go first because I have very little to say. I'm disappointed in my Niners, but let me just say, go Bengals.
I hate that guy, Sam.
That's it?
That's it?
Okay, Lisa?
Nothing to report in terms of meetings this week, but will be attending a couple of meetings. There's, if anyone is interested, Small Business Development Center, meeting on contracts for small businesses, which if anyone's looking to add additional contracts or change stuff in their business, they can be found through the Long Beach Business Development Team. And then, did attend the meetings from LA County Department of Health today regarding operating during the Super Bowl and what that means. Was encouraged to see numbers falling again, which is a good sign, and I think our numbers are trending that same way, which is also encouraging. Was going to ask how enforcement of the vaccine requirement for bars is going and what that looks like moving into Super Bowl weekend, if Grayson, if you'd be able to speak to that, or, I was going to ask Captain Madali last time, but he was out of, out of town for that, so, just wanted to see what that level of enforcement is at this time. I don't know that people are doing that currently, and that is part of the requirement still.
Can you, I'm sorry, I don't know if you heard all that, Grayson, asking about the requirements for masking and bars and that kind of thing, especially as we get close to Super Bowl?
Yes.
And also vaccine requirements for bars.
With the vaccine requirements, are you all, are those all being checked?
No, they're not.
No?
No.
Well, he's coming forward, thank you.
No, we have not done any enforcement or checking any of the bars regarding masks or vaccination status. We're leaving that upon each business to do that on their own, and the sheriffs are not going in there checking that.
But if somebody calls, you will have to show up?
Oh, we'll definitely show up.
Okay, if somebody complains?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just like with bonds and that kind of thing?
Yeah, bonds gets, we get that, well, we get it on the Catalina Express as well. However, it's their business, and if they want them to leave, then they'll have to place them under arrest for trespassing. We can't be the victim of that, and we will not, but we will gladly take their private persons arrest on something like that.
Right, okay. Did that answer your question?
It does, although I was under the impression LA County was responsible for enforcing that, for enforcing those regulations.
LA County sheriffs?
Yes, because they're the arm of the county here.
So do we need to maybe have enough, a meeting at some point with the sheriffs?
Well, I know during COVID, and Grayson can probably agree with this, the sheriff really made it very clear that he was not going to have his, his deputies and sheriffs force spending their time doing that when there was other things to be dealing with.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All righty.
Well, that's where the drunks are, so, okay, so catch when they leave. Okay, anything, Lisa, any more?
And then, there was one other meeting coming up just for the connectivity group, so hopefully we'll have some more to report back on that soon.
Oh, good. Is that on your list to talk, let me have a meeting?
Have I already done it? Yeah.
Okay, and Yessenya?
I guess I've attended three different meetings this last couple weeks from California Contract Cities. One was with, it was a city manager's meeting with Mike Vallier. It was the Solid Waste Consultant, kind of giving us more information on SB 1383, as well as attended their legislative meeting. And I was also brought on the board for their membership committee. And we will also have another meeting tomorrow, actually, over public safety.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Mayor Protan?
Hi there. First and foremost, just wanted to send a very big thank you to to, um, our, our county fire, our City of Avalon Fire, paramedics, sheriff's department. Um, January was an extraordinarily difficult month for nearly every single person in our community, but, um, definitely for our first responders. Um, so, thank you, Chief, for your comments and your sharing of information of resources that are available to all the departments. Um, but appreciate everybody being able to go through a difficult situation and then get up the next day and, and unfortunately do it again, so, um, shout out to you guys. Uh, it sounds as though we are going to have cruise ship conferences again this year. Um, I'm hoping, uh, personally, that there is an ability to participate remotely, um, but it does sound like, um, the, uh, both the sea trade and, um, the FCCA conference are moving forward for this year, one in April and one in June. Um, and then we, uh, I also was on the L.A. County Call today and was encouraged with, um, the Health Department's regulations for the upcoming Super Bowl, and, um, also the NFL providing, uh, N95 masks for everybody in attendance. I think that's incredibly important. Um, and then lastly, I am, uh, very excited to welcome our new city manager, David Maestros, and I will also, uh, be appreciating you attending with me tomorrow night for our Gateway Cities Council of Government Board meeting. And that's all I have.
Great, okay. Um, I got a, a notice from Kathleen Carlisle Hill that she had put a shout out to, um, Janice Hahn and Congressman Loenthal about getting free masks for everybody in Avalon. I don't know if you've got that. And I would kinda like to support that. They were gonna look into that, so that, because they were trying to get them, she was trying to get them at Leo's, so people could just go to Leo's and get free masks, especially since they're all pretty much need to be these or the N95s. So I don't know if we could maybe just give a call to Herlinda or?
We did have a call, uh, Chief and I, maybe a couple of weeks ago, with Herlinda, asking about home test also. We did not specifically ask for masks, we were more interested in the home test at that time.
Uh-huh.
And then, um, they weren't unavailable to us.
They were not?
The home test anyway, but certainly we can ping them about masks.
That would be nice, because I appreciate her reaching out. But there was that website where we go and you're, you can order those free antigen tests, and I did, and I got mine in about a week.
Yeah.
So, and then my husband ordered his. The CDC, so, yeah, so that, that's definitely available for people out there. And then I have a SCAD meeting on Thursday, and of course, I will be doing that from my home. Okay, oral communications, it's an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. Is there anybody either in the audience or, oh, here comes Paul, or anybody on?
Nothing up here.
Okay.
Paul Burchell, Avalon Library, hello, everybody. Uh, nice to meet you, Mr. Maestros.
Meet you.
Uh, just a quick rundown of, uh, just some usual library stuff that's going on. Uh, we're still circulating laptops and hotspot kits for checkout. Uh, those can be checked out for three weeks at a time and renewed if necessary. We still provide, uh, free internet access, uh, in our courtyard and in the library building, and that's seven days a week, even though we're only open five. Uh, people can sit in the courtyard and use their Wi-Fi at our heart's content. Uh, we have a huge collection of audiobooks, ebooks, streaming movies from the website, lacountylibrary.org. Uh, I wanted to call your attention to some of our little virtual programs that are also available on that website. Some of them are looking pretty good to me. Uh, on February, uh, third, this Thursday, uh, we are running a program on staying safe on dating apps.
Ooh.
Which, uh, is, uh, sounds pretty, pretty interesting. Uh, Thursday, February eighth, at six P.M., uh, they're gonna do a lecture about Seed L.A., which is the county's first, uh, public college prep boarding school, uh, for troubled youth. Uh, it's in South Central, so if you feel like moving off of Catalina to go to a boarding school at South Central, that's available. Uh, February ninth, uh, we're doing a program, uh, hosted by, uh, the owner of the Ribbed Bodice Bookshop, uh, in Culver City, about LGBT romance novels. Uh, and coming up on, uh, February tenth, uh, there is a program on locking down your data, uh, how to back up your data, keep your information safe and private, uh, avoid identity theft, uh, get VPNs, that's on February tenth at four o'clock. Uh, in terms of stuff in person, uh, I'm still giving away make-your-own catapult kits. Uh, they're very, they're really just a couple sticks and a spoon, and it's used to do pom-poms, so not eggs, no eggs. Uh, decorate your own kite in honor of the kite festival coming up, little foam kites with lots of, lots of pretty, uh, tail things. Uh, decorate your own jigsaw puzzle, I have that available.
Ooh.
Uh, those are pretty fun. They're like wooden planks with like lots of jigsaws. You draw on them, then you break them off, and you put them together, and you got a jigsaw puzzle. Uh, and in honor of the Lunar New Year, uh, make your own dragon puppet with, you know, the sticks and the folding things. And that's what I got for you.
Perfect timing, thank you, Paul, always a pleasure. Anybody else? No? Denise, nothing? Okay. Consent calendar.
Okay, we have, uh, currently five items on the consent calendar. And, uh, do we make a motion to, to proceed at this point, or does somebody, if there, if there's a motion to remove something from the consent calendar, is that done at the conclusion of my reading?
She usually reads the topic.
Oh, okay, you read those? Okay. Sorry, Denise, didn't mean to step on your toes.
No, I don't read.
Oh. That's what I thought, that's what I thought. So, uh, for the consent calendar, we have approval, a request for approval of the minutes, the January fourth, 2022 is amended, and the January eighteenth, 2022, regular city council minutes.
Okay.
Um, uh, the warrants, approval of the warrant, total expenditures from January tenth, 2022 through, uh, January twenty-first, 2022, totaling eight hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixteen cents. Uh, we have a request to adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two second quarter treasurer's report. Um, and then they, uh, the findings, continuing findings to continue to hold the remote telecom, teleconference virtual council meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. And this is a request to determine the COVID-19 state of emergency as proclaimed by the governor still exists, and has been considered by city council in deciding to continue, uh, to have, uh, teleconference meetings, and that the state and local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing in connection with COVID-19. And as a result of COVID-19 emergency, a meeting in person would present imminent risk to the health and safety of our attendees. Uh, and finally, we have a, uh, request for the, approve the Fourth of July barge and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Curtain Maritime to provide barge services for the 2022 Fourth of July fireworks display.
Thank you. There has been a request to remove item number five by one of the council members, uh, for a separate vote, and I would just like to make a comment that unrestrictive cash balance is looking really good, so Matt, I mean, things, things are looking up, so that was all good. So anyway, um, if we don't mind if we take number five off, and then is there motions from items one, two, four?
I'll make a motion to approve items one, two, three, four.
I'll second.
Okay, they moved in second, call for the, if there's no comments, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number five. That was kind of a consent thing, I don't know if anybody wanted to comment it, because it was asked to be pulled off for a separate vote. So, um, I really appreciate the fact that, you know, it was pulled off the last agenda, and due diligence was done to get proper bids and all of that, and so, um, with that, I'll make a recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute agreement with Curtain Maritime to provide the barge service for 2022 Fourth of July fireworks display.
I'll second.
Any comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
No.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Okay, and item number six, and I think Audrey McDonald's up.
Okay, so item number six is a, um, a staff recommendation regarding, uh, pursuing an RFP for the new transit contract or extending the existing contract, uh, with Transportation Concepts, and Audra is here to, uh, speak on that and answer any questions council may have.
Good evening, again, Mayor and Council, Audrey McDonald, Administrative Analyst. Um, you're probably wondering why this is coming to you a year in advance, and the reason that this is coming to you a year in advance is because it would take about a year if you decided that you wanted us to go out for RFP. So, the City of Avalon, um, uses Transportation Concepts to operate our fixed drop service, also known as the Garibaldi. It runs seven days a week, public transportation, and our dial-a-ride, which, um, pre-COVID was for fifty-five and over. During COVID, when, uh, we eliminated the taxi voucher program, we opened up the dial-a-ride to all residents. That doesn't seem to be a problem, and at this point, we don't see changing that at all, unless, uh, you guys decide that that's something that we, we need to do. Uh, Transportation Concepts is doing its best to, uh, uh, make sure everyone gets a ride, and people are learning, um, learning how to, to use the system. Uh, so, we have, uh, we, uh, as you may recall, or may not, the last transportation contract, uh, before Transportation Concepts was for twenty-five years. We had the same transit operator, and we decided that it was time, after twenty-five years, to go out to bid. Um, one of the, uh, reasons also was that we were bringing onboard new electric buses. After a very lengthy RFP process, uh, which cost about twenty-five thousand dollars and took about a year, maybe a little bit longer, to complete, uh, we awarded the contract to Transportation Concepts. They have provided excellent service to the city. They have been willing to work with us in all kinds of different ways. When, uh, the electric buses, uh, turned out not to be as safe as we thought, uh, they were able to bring in buses for us to run, so we never skipped a beat. Um, they continue to do that for us, they continue to make sure that we stay in compliance with our vehicles, and, uh, they also are great with, uh, providing us the data necessary for the required NTD reporting, which happens annually. Um, this would be the third extension, if that's what you chose to do, and, um, I don't have anything bad to say about Transportation Concepts, they're great, they hire local people, uh, they promote people with, uh, from within, and, um, I, I, because of the fact that we are very short-staffed and short on money, I would think that offering Transportation Concepts, um, another two years into 2025 would make sense. Um, if that's the direction the council wants to go, um, I will sit down with them and, uh, negotiate the next two years, and then bring it back to you for your review. Uh, I think Brett Baum and Rich Rogers are on Zoom, uh, if you have any questions for them or questions for me, and I also have passenger count data, if you're interested for the month of January, which is just kinda fun.
You know, that would be nice to get that on a quarterly basis, I think.
Yeah, I can, I, I can totally do that, but I'll just go ahead and give you the numbers for January, because January's a slow month. Um, we moved nine hundred and thirty-seven people on the fixed route, which is not much to shake a stick up. Five hundred and nine people on dial-a-ride for a total, um, passenger count of one thousand four hundred and forty-six.
What do you think a, uh, a high number would have sometime been?
Okay, that's a big question, that you would ha, I would have to go back pre-COVID and pull those numbers for you, and I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
And, um, come back. I can tell you, though, that dial-a-ride will be lower.
Yeah.
Because of the restrictions. If you recall, originally, I think we had the dial-a-ride age at sixty-two, and then we lowered the dial-a-ride age to fifty-five, because we weren't getting a lot of riders, and then during COVID, then we opened it up to everyone. Um, if there are any complaints, all the dial-a-ride passengers have my number, and I make sure that everyone gets taken care of, um, to the best of my ability, and Transportation Concepts is always great at making sure they are in contact with me if buses are out of service, or things are not going well, um, or there's issues, so.
So, okay, so now anybody can go on dial-a-ride?
Anybody can go on dial-a-ride, it's two dollars a person.
And do they, and do they have to go to the office and sign up?
Yes, they do.
Okay, but then when you just get on the bus, that's just hop on and pay?
Uh, I think it's a dollar or two dollars.
Okay.
And I can also tell you that because of the new, um, onsite manager who's very technically savvy, our, uh, mobile ticketing has increased dramatically. Um, the QR codes are, a lot of people thought QR cards were, QR codes were gonna go away. Well, guess what? They're not.
Really?
And, um, so it's great now, this, all of the bus stop signs have QR codes for, um, the token transit, which is the mobile app, mobile pay app, as well as the information on the real time, because people don't read maps anymore. Um, it's, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out, because I know about the, the code. I didn't know that that was there. I have numerous guests at the hotel, or people who will stop by looking for the bus stop, and like, now I know I can send them, and there's a QR code.
Yep.
They can look, they can get it, and I can direct them to the bus stop over on Catalina.
And if they, and if they do QR code, it'll take them straight to the token, uh, the transit app, which will give, well, we're, I'm gonna have to come, we're gonna have to update our GPS trackers, but it'll give them real-time data on the route as well.
Great.
So, you know, you know your wait time at this stop is going to be until, you know.
Because I'm constantly getting people asking me about the bus, because they wanna go up to the memorial, so it's.
Yeah, 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 it's, it's great, and then, and, and, you know, people don't read maps, and you can see, they don't know how to, and you can see it in the rental golf carts every day.
The great part about it, too, is that it actually is on, uh, Google Maps. When you go to look at Google and find a way to get from one place to another, the transit currently does show up under the transit option on Google Maps for certain.
Right, it is GTFS connected, that is correct.
And they do read those, because they talk to them, so.
So they've also, so Transit, Transportation Concepts has always, also been very willing to, um, embrace upgrading technology and, and getting us up to speed, and I used to, before COVID, attend Calat conferences where all this new technology would be talked about, and then I'd come back excited, something new would happen, and that's how we ended up with, uh, the mobile ticketing app, and the, the GTFS and the transit app, and all that great stuff, so.
Okay, so, how are we paying for this? It's a million sticks?
Um, it's, it's paid for through a combination of, well, right now, right now, it is what it is, and it's paid through with a combination of funds from Metro. So it's, uh, TDA Article Eight, it's Prop A, Prop C, Measure M, Measure R, and Prop A Incentive, and Fairbanks.
So it doesn't cost us anything?
No, it, it, sometimes twenty to thirty thousand dollars in the whole scheme of things, it's not huge, so.
And they keep, and they keep all of the fares?
No, we get the fares.
Oh, so I'd be curious to see how much we're getting fares over time.
Oh, I have that, I can give you that, I can come back and give you a transit, I can come back and give you a transit update with.
Yeah, that would be.
Ridership numbers, pre-COVID.
Yeah.
Post-COVID.
Yeah.
Fairbanks, all of that.
Doesn't have to be too elaborate, but just something, because I don't think we have a clue.
Yeah.
Really?
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
I geek out on that stuff, that's fun, that's fun for me.
Or any questions or comments?
The only, the only thing I was gonna say was just, I would prefer to go with option two, to extend their contract, but then, when the RFP does come back, to look at both an on-demand service for potentially smaller vehicle, so looking at, one of the biggest things that people love is getting into a golf cart when they get off the boat, and we know that when family members and friends come to visit, um, but looking. But looking at that as something that is something people can experience here, and not many other places currently, trying to make it a unique experience when they get off the boat. I feel like the demand for an Uber-type system that the city can operate through microtransit is popular right now. There's a lot of federal funds and city, state funds for microtransit right now. And so, potentially looking at investing in that as part of the next contract, I think, might be a wise step to make.
I like that.
I'm 100% in agreement, and we've looked at microtransit, like, fixed routes, where we take the Dial-A-Ride and then we divert it, like, up and down the hills, because the bus doesn't meet the needs of that. You know, the route would take an hour or so, we've done the route, but even a smaller vehicle than the van, the demand might be high, but, you know, maybe we could get some electric golf cart. I mean, the golf cart thing, I would have to talk to Matt about with our insurance.
Sure.
You know?
Right.
For public transit vehicles.
Right, and the only reason I wrote to that is because I think that for some transit ideas to work here, the potential for those to be electric and/or other fuel types, and be able to house them on city property makes way more sense than a large bus that may or may not be able to make it up the hills or down the hills. We have experience with that already, we know it'll work, so...
Yeah, it'd be great to find, like, a golf cart size that's enclosed.
Right. There, if you look at, there's a company that I know of, just because of some friends that operated, but ATL Cruisers has six-to-eight passenger enclosed vehicles that are similar to, like, the bubble-type golf carts that you see, that I think even fit under the newest length requirement for golf carts, so...
And that's, and that's the problem, we are going to find, going back to Mr. Bombard's issues with the CARB, is that the city of Avalon is also, our fleets are also mandated under that. And the problem is, is that the smaller buses are not as, not, there's not as much demand, so there hasn't been, most of them are prototypes, similar to what we got last time, which didn't really work out, because we bought buses from a battery company that didn't manufacture buses. And so, if the federal government would get together and just say, "Okay, you all got to work together."
Yeah. There was a gentleman, and I'll pull his name from my notes to give to you, but from Core, C-O-R-E, what's the name of the program, with the California Air Resources Board, I kind of derailed him during the second CARB meeting, and everyone was like, "We're talking about boats, not golf carts here, what are you doing?" But he had mentioned in his presentation that autoettes and small microvehicles were part of that funding opportunity. And so, I was like, "Cool, that's great, that's extra money, and some localities are not giving them to boats, they're giving them to vehicles." So, if we can hit it up that way, then that might be a good thing.
And CARB does come to the LTSS meetings that I sit on to as well, so...
Okay, so, Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to extend Transportation Concepts' contract an additional two years, and begin negotiations for the contract extension to be brought back to Council for review at a later date. And then, just again, would ask that microtransit be part of the review for the next round of RFP.
Is there a second?
Call second, but do we have any public comment?
We have none on any comment.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please, Denise.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Audra, nice to see you.
And I, I just want to add for a quick comment, I wanted to wait till after the vote. For Mr. Baum and Mr. Rogers, you have a phenomenal staff over here in Avalon, very, very wonderful staff. I utilize the Transit for hospitality purposes, and just very much appreciate them. I see them early in the mornings, late in the evenings, tidying up the buses, the fleet in general, and everybody is just very friendly. So, I know we struggled for years trying to get our transit system in order, and I just wanted to make sure that I very publicly gave them their due, that they're a wonderful team. So, thank you for sticking it through with us.
Yes, very well said.
Thank you, Cindy.
What was that? Public Works Project. Okay, and we're going into closed session?
Okay, we have a closed session, public employee performance evaluation for the city manager.
Excellent, okay. Good night, Tony.
Thank you. Good night, Tony.
Do you have to announce the time that you come back?
No.
And we are back from closed session.
Okay, at this time we have no reportable action.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.